Twenty-two meeting to order. We'll start with a prayer by Commissioner Vowell and I'll do the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Heavenly Father, we come to you giving you honor and praise tonight, thanking you for every blessing that you send to us, thanking you, Lord, most of all, for salvation that only you can give. Please forgive us of our sins, Father. We know there's times that we fail you each and every day. Please cleanse us tonight, make us worthy, Lord, to enter into these meetings, God, that you and our people have seen fit to place a sin. We pray, Lord, as we go into this meeting, that you give us wisdom, discernment, Father, do what's right by your people. All this we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Next, we'll have appearance of citizens. If there's anyone that would like to address the commission about anything that's not on the agenda, come up to the podium and you'll have, state your name and address and you'll have three minutes. You're just... That's fine. All right. Don't have anyone?
I'd like to make a comment, please.
Okay.
I just simply wanted to express my gratitude to Commissioner Cracy for teaching me all that he has. While I've been a commissioner, he's always been, made himself available for any questions that I've had. He's always, you know, taught me where to find information, how to obtain it, and he's been a wealth of knowledge. And with regards to working with the state level, I'd like to thank Commissioner Wondell for encouraging me to step further in being involved in all the things that I have. And I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you very much to the people of District Seven, especially those that had signed my petition, not knowing that I had no intentions of running again. Simply put, four years ago, the Oak Ridge Chamber of Commerce had an event and I tripped across my notes from that day, where at the very bottom, I was asking for people to humbly, I was humbly asking for them to vote for me on my birthday, on August 2nd that year. The note at the very bottom says, "August 2nd, 2022, Tuesday is election day. August 2nd, 2022 is my birthday again. August 2nd, 2022 is my 60th birthday, the day I plan on retiring." So with that being said, that's the reason why I'm not running again. It was already in the cards, being played. And I apologize for not telling anyone. I just felt it was my business and it was for me to get my ducks in a row. But good luck to any and all of you that are running again and/or stepping up to the plate for the first time around. It's not that I need any more friends, it's just that I'm going out with my friends that night. But I wanted to say thank you very much, and I wanted to say it in my own words. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you very much, Jerry.
Next, we'll have the approval and correction of agendas. Start with the consent agenda.
Is that on the consent?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to just take the ADA Oversight Committee off of the consent. I just want to make a couple of comments when it comes up on the regular agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other corrections to the consent agenda? Not let's, all those in favor of approving as?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move to the regular agenda. And you want to put ADA, move ADA to the...
Yeah, I'd like to place the ADA Oversight Committee.
Do you want to put that after operations?
Wherever you, as the chairman, wish to put it. Be best for the commission.
Is that okay with everybody? Put it after operations, okay. Any, do we have a motion to approve the, got a motion by Commissioner Fritz?
I have a change too, sir.
Oh, go ahead.
I'd like to, to the mayor's report, I'd like to add...
The C cadets as a number four.
C cadets under the mayor's report. Any other corrections or changes to the agenda? All those in favor approving as amended.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number five, we've got reappointments to the Health and Educational Board of Anderson County. Motion by Commissioner Meredith. Approve, approve all three. Group seconded by Commissioner Isible. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote on this one. Fifteen yes. Motion passes unanimously. Number six, got department presentations. Road Department, Gary Long, or I guess Chairman White, do you want to speak on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Arcadia Springs easement, the road going in there, we want to ask Mr. Yeager to come up and talk to us about how we're going to accept this road into our...
There's a man right there.
Yeah, come on.
Oh, I'm close. We've been, we go ship. The attorneys for the bank that owns that asset protection company. You've got the final version in your agenda pack. That's the deed to the county to build that road. Gary's going to take a look at it, see what, I think he already have, see what it needs to bring it up to county road standards. Tonight, I need approval for that deed. I need authorization for the mayor, Chairman Anderson, and Gary will sign that. Robbie, I need a $10 check. We negotiated a good deal. Hard to believe we're talking about $10 in Arcadian Springs, isn't it? But once we get that built up to county road specs, we'll be back through the Highway Committee and ask for that road to become a county road with all rights and privileges, perpetual maintenance, and everything that goes with a county road. But tonight, I'm asking for approval of that deed, that dedication deed, and give those individuals, Chairman Anderson, Mayor Frank, and Gary Long, our Highway Superintendent, the ability to sign that, and we'll move forward and get that done immediately.
Motion by Commissioner Waddell, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion? You want to donate $5 apiece to the county?
It's worth it, isn't it?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. All right, let's go to the board and vote on this one. Motion passes unanimously.
I really appreciate you, and I'm sure all the people of Arcadian Springs appreciate it. This is that main entrance way, village way that comes off 61 there. They've been waiting for it for several years. It's been a long saga up there, but anyway, it's fixing to be over and many thanks to our mayor, Gary Long, and certainly two commissioners up there, Chairman Anderson, Denver Waddell. You guys have kept pushing it to get it done, and it's done. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next, we have committee reports. Purchasing report, Robbie Holbert, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up in the purchasing committee, we have one contract approved by the Law Director. It's addendum for price revisions for institutional wholesale company for the cafeteria.
Motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. In other business, there's one item to surplus the 2007 GMC Sierra the Sheriff's Department owns, in some working condition.
Motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner McCainy. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, that's all for purchasing. I'll move on to the budget agenda now, the finance, I mean, the budget, sorry. The cash and fund balance report, and the general fund line, restricted funds 973,0021. Committed funds are 1.7 million. Assigned funds, 3.1 million. Unassigned fund balance is at 7.3 million, for a total fund balance of 13,286,507. Cash is at 15,870,096 this month. We're ending January. Any questions?
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robbie, I may misunderstood you. The 121 code...
Yes, sir.
American Rescue Plan, I thought you said it was 7.9. Maybe you said 7.3 at that meeting.
I think it's 7.4 or something. We spent 135,000 of that already, but...
Okay. Maybe it's, we're getting a total of 14.9 roughly?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe that's where I got the nine from.
I'd have to double check that. I don't have it...
That would be right. We got half of it now, like you said, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We got a motion by Commissioner Jamison, seconded by Commissioner McCainy. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote.
We don't, we don't have to vote on them.
Don't need to vote on them?
It's just information.
I've already proceeded into the vote screen. Can you either abstain or do something here? Because if I go back, it won't remember what we're supposed to do.
Oh, okay.
Denver, you get to hit yes. It doesn't matter. Denver said no. Hey, happy.
Oh, boy.
I thought I was the only one who hit the wrong button.
Okay. Sales tax report for December. The county was up 8% from last December. Anderson County portion, the county as a whole was up 39% last December. For the calendar year totals, 2021, we were up 18% as a county, and Anderson County's portion was up 17%. So obviously, those are good numbers. We talk about that every month. But someone was interested in December. It did increase almost $40,000 for the county. Any questions on the sales tax?
We can vote yes on that, couldn't we?
No. Well, yeah, you can. You don't have to. Group two appropriations from the school department, there are three, 11, 12, and 13, seeking approval as a group or individually. Are I going to answer any questions?
Motion to approve as a group by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Meredith. You have a question, or are we just seconding? Did you, oh, just second, okay. Any, any questions or discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, there are no group three transfers. Group five appropriations, non-school, which I have group four, after that, I don't, and group, this is group four appropriations, my bad.
Motion by Commissioner Fritz.
14 through 20 and 26.
Group is a group, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion? All right, let's go to the board. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, transfers, non-school, there are two, 22 and 23, both from preservation of records.
Motion by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and group six appropriations that affect the general fund and assigned fund balance, there are three, 21, 24, and 25.
Motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Isible. Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 21 for the 203,000 tourism enhancement grant, it's going to be used for the Anderson County Park.
That's correct. Expand the park.
All of it is.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. 14 yes, one no. Motion passes.
Just to be clear, that'll create an additional 22 short-term electrical sites for the park. All right. Under group seven miscellaneous, A was the fire truck resolution. There was discussion, no action was taken.
Got a question by Commissioner Fritz.
Just on that parks thing, that will, should be, be able to be paid off in five years for the money, revenues and everything generated, just on the extra fees generated from the expansion. So that's just not including all the extra money that's generated from people coming in and staying at the park, but just from the fees collected from the park itself, should pay that money off in within five years.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Commissioner Wondell.
Yes. Also, I've noticed in there 150,000. Is, is there a grant in place for that?
Well, two years ago, the county approved a grant. It was a match of 75,000 from the general fund, and we got a 75,000 grant. But the cost of the, of the expansion has increased so much, that's why they're asking for an additional 203,000. So the county's funding basically 278, and where the grant is 75,000. State grant, yes. Okay, sorry, I'll get back to miscellaneous. Group A fire truck resolution, there was discussion, no action was taken. In group B, the 22, 23 budget calendar forms and guidelines were presented, and there was a motion to pass all those. Under new business, there were two new budget amendments that we've already, that were approved under the transfers in the Budget Committee, and there was no old business. So unless y'all have any questions, that's all I have.
Good job.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Oh, Commissioner Wondell.
Thanks, I just got, Robbie, several years ago, we talked about P cards.
Yes, sir.
And I think you and the team all put togethers, I call it a policy in place, kind of refresh our viewers at home so they understand. The way that went down is all the department heads had to sign off on a, on an agreement that basically laid out how to use the P cards and the terms and conditions. Is that, is that about right?
That's true. They actually have to take a test and pass it, which is not a very hard test, before they can even have a P card. But yes, the terms and conditions, they have to sign off on those as well.
So we have something in place internally here, within the local government, to protect us?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Next, we've got the Director of Schools report. Dr. Parrott.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, I'm skipping ahead. HR advisory.
I'll let you go. Good evening. I submitted the HR Advisory Committee minutes. I think that was on your all's agenda. And in there, there was a couple of things I wanted to bring forward. In the HR advisory report, the direct report, numbers one and four. Number one speaks to the compensation plan pay grades. All that is, is the update from the prior year adjustment. There's no other changes to it. It's just putting that out there so you all have that information in preparation coming up for the next budget year. Just wanted to inform you on that and see if you had any questions or comments there. Okay. Number four is on the new employee secure portal. So the HR office, IT, and finance have worked together since the inclusion of the current employee portal. So a bit of history behind that, that was something that was needed to help facilitate a secure way for the employees to submit changes. And NeoGov was our best option at that time. The goal has always been to move to the local government option, once it could handle our base employee and our needs. So that time is here. It went live today. We're doing on, all onboarding. We're rolling this out in a very slow pace, step by step, to make sure that we don't lose anybody along the way. Onboarding, as well as an application for people to apply for jobs, has been rolled out. So I'll, I'll be coming back and reporting out on that once we have it completed, but it did start today. I think you all should have got an email on that. I just want to make you aware. If any of the employees reach out to you with questions, they can always reach out to Drew. He is the, our tech person in HR, and he will be sure to help you all, and if not, we'll help too. It's a very easy program to use. It's clicking, and where we used to have to, to upload and do things on a desktop, it's all done by smartphone now, which will make it easy, easier to use, more user friendly. So, and of course, one of these things that, that we've looked at in this is the cost. That's always a factor. NeoGov went up another $2,000 this year, which we're not renewing, and this, hopefully, by the time we get completed, will be less than that. A lot less than what we have budget is, is the hope. So, does anybody have any questions on that? Okay. A couple other things I just wanted to mention to you. It was in the consent agenda, under the Board of Trustees minutes. Item is action to the HR coaching, which is the incentive program, was approved by the Board of Trustees for the employees this year. What's that, what that means is those folks that utilize the coverage do get to complete an incentive program and receive money off of their premium on, every month. So thank you to the Board of Trustees for that. I know the employees will be very happy. Another thing that we've worked through on the wellness program through the Board of Trustees, in prior year, the Board of Trustees set aside some funding for wellness. In that was funding to pay for a new mom's room, which was, it's a federal requirement that we have to have, and they have set that aside. Anderson County Courthouse, as well as the Jolly Building, who will utilize our section as well. EMS are already up to date and compliant. We're currently working with the detention facility, as well as conversations with all the other satellite office to make sure that everything's in place. So just kind of giving you an update on that and letting you know that once all the cost has been associated and figured out, we'll be getting y'all pictures, as well as a budget on it, so you can see what's happening. Okay? In the January 24th meeting of the Board of Trustees, two things that they also put in place is the continuance of the Thrive Health and Wellness Center Occupational Therapy for the 22, 23 year fiscal year. That's something that the employees have found great value in. It is, I know for me personally, allowing me to have occupational therapy instead of using medication. I always see that as a win. So that's been approved, as well as the Board of Trustees has approved the employees to take advantage of the Tennessee Stars 529 benefit. That's where they can put money aside for their child, younger sibling or so, or such, for their education benefit, and it can be payroll deduct now. So that's another program that's being put in place. All of these, kind of go back and answer to some of those asked in the survey that's been shared with you, on what the employees want to see. So we're trying to meet those needs as we go through this. So that's all I have.
Good job.
Y'all have any questions? All right, thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you. Always a pleasure to come before the County Commission. Thank you, Chairman Anderson, for, for letting me have just a few minutes to talk about Anderson County schools, and thank you for inviting me last night to the Town Hall meeting. I thought it was really good, and you all did, gave the citizens a lot of great information. So thank you about that. Just a few highlights. One of the things that, it's hard to believe that I'm finishing up six years as Director of Schools. It seems like just last week, I started. And one of the things we always want to do is we want to always try to make Anderson County schools a little better. So this year, we did an employee survey. We, we kind of do one every year, but we took it a step farther. We did an employee survey of why, why do you teach in Anderson County? What brought you to Anderson County? What things do you want, why do you want to stay in Anderson County, and things like that? And so through that, we did focus groups, and we met with the custodians, the cafeteria workers, the assistants, the teachers, everybody, and, and asked them, you know, what's going well with Anderson County? What can we tweak? What's kind of off the rails? What can we do to make some things better? And the Board of Education, we had a retreat last weekend, and we talked about some of those things, and you'll be hearing about some of those things. I think we can always make things better for our employees. You know, our motto is every student, every day, but it shouldn't conflict with every employee every day. So I'm excited about some things about that. We're looking at, especially with our, with our classified people, looking at a salary compensation of our, to make sure, we won't ever be in line with some people, but we want to make sure our employees make a good living wage. So the Board is really interested in that, of trying to move some of our custodians and assistants and secretaries up on the scale and look at some of those things, and I think we can do that. Another thing is our ESG project, it's on track. They've started doing some preliminary work at some of our schools. I think you're really going to be excited when you see Norris Elementary School and Lake City Elementary and Lake City Middle, some of the things we're going to do there to really make, really freshen up the outside of it. We also are working with, got Mr. Meredith and Mr. Wondell's helping me. Hope to meet with TBA here in the next two or three weeks to talk about our school at Claxton. The Board of Education, it's on our agenda for them to give their stamp of approval moving forward with our new school this next month, so a lot of things will be coming into place. I got, you know, I think TBA needs to be a good partner with us over there, and I think that, not saying they won't, but I think that we really, that community needs that new school, and what we want to do is, that school be there for the next 50 to 75 years. We want to make sure it's in the best place. If it goes where it is, can we do it there? If it needs to move somewhere else? So all them things are questions we're going to try to answer here in the next month or two. We've got Michael Brady, MBI Incorporated, working on just kind of a, a scale drawing of it to where then, once we get it, we can go out and sit down with the public, once we kind of get some other things in place, we want to do that. Got some really good feedback from our survey of the people in Claxton, so those are some things we're working on. This, this month, our Board recognized our principals. As you know, we do a group every month, and they did a resolution for our principals. I think we got the best principals in the state. They do a tremendous job. They work hard for our students, and they, they dedicated February 10th of this month as Principal Appreciation Day, so it's just a way to recognize the people and the hard work they do. And I will take, any questions?
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Parrott, Claxton School, it's got sections that are well over 100 years old, doesn't it?
Yes, yes. And, and they can't be upgraded on our ADA. That's, that's a lot of our concern.
Yeah, absolutely is. Lot of the building that can't be accessed by ADA folks.
Yes.
You've done a lot that you could over the years, and certainly have. I'll help, and I'll work with Rick and see if we can get a meeting together, and my, my hope is we still utilize the property over there where they were going to put the coal ash, and...
Yep, yep.
I don't, I'm hoping they won't need that any longer, and that would be a great spot to put a school and many other things, I'm hoping. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. One thing I'd like to do when we get just a little bit further in the process is, is have a joint meeting with County Commission and the School Board. I've talked to the School Board about that, and sit down and talk about funding and things like that. The one thing we're not going to do is come back and ask for tax increase to build this school. We're trying to work out. Mayor Frank's been helping us with the Cumberland financing, but I've got a, got a meeting with USDA on Wednesday at 10:30, and we do qualify for that loan. Don't know all the ins and outs of it, and I really appreciate the mayor putting us in touch with the people over in Knoxville, but once we know more about that, and that's a fixed, fixed, I guess, interest at, right at 2%, so it's a really good interest rate, and you could, you can go out 40 years on it if you want to, but I don't think we need to go out that far. But, but those are some things, you know, a lot of things moved... But, but those are some things, you know, a lot of things moving into place. So we want to make sure we got, as, as a good friend of mine used to say, we want to make sure we got all of our ducks in a row. I may, I may have heard that tonight already, uh, but we want to make sure that we do that and, and do a good job, because you don't get a do-over when you do something wrong in a school.
Any questions for Dr. Perry?
I'm going to, we've got the girls from Anderson County in District Championship. Do what? Yeah, and we've got the boys will be playing in the District Championship from Clinton here in just a minute. So, I'm going to head that way. Thank you all.
Good, thank you. Okay, next, County Mayor, report. Mayor Frank.
All right. The first, and I did want to make a little note, if maybe at the end of the meeting we could have a moment of silence for Robbie Holbrook. His father passed away. So, I know Robbie does a, a great job for us, and some folks didn't realize that. He's very private and humble, and so I think that would be a nice gesture, um, the Commission and Mayor and those that are here. I failed to get this on Operations Committee. I had this first action item on my agenda. I talked to Jay about it, but this was my failure. He did put this in his report in terms of a resolution. I'm requesting a motion to approve the resolution allowing a Melton Hill Longbeards chapter of the National Wild Turkey Federation managed turkey hunt, um, with a youth hunt and a veterans hunt. And, um, this is one, kind of ironically, one of the volunteer award winners tonight for 4H, Ms. Riley Mazingo. She was one of the youth that did the very first hunt out at the landfill. And I think, Jay, was it a record state? It was, it was huge. But the, uh, the Longbeards manage it, they actually accompany the hunters. It's a very limited hunt, and it's worked very well with the county, and, and, uh, so we're seeking approval for that.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Wondell. Any other discussion? Let's go to the Board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and the next action item is Resolution 2202-913. This is a requirement of TDOT. We have to have this resolution approved with regard to, um, compliance with their policies relative to consultant selection. This is a part of the Norwood Sidewalk Grant. We have two grants, uh, for those sidewalks, and we have to have this in order to keep moving forward.
Motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion? Let's go to the Board and vote. 14 yes, 1 no. Motion passes, not unit, motion passes.
Okay, the next item, and I have some suggested language, is, uh, I'm requesting a motion to declare a statement of support for Highland Communications, um, for a broadband grant application with the State of Tennessee. I can put this in the form of a resolution, or the language I was considering, I just drafted something, um, perhaps, a motion expressing Anderson County government recognition of the importance of critical broadband infrastructure in facilitating telemedicine, distance learning, and telecommuting, and recognition that reliable, affordable broadband service is necessary, and therefore resolving that Anderson County supports Highland Communications broadband grant application to the State of Tennessee in order to serve our citizens and lay a foundation for recovery. So that's, um, language that I'm requesting. To tell you a little bit about this process, a lot of you, I think there have been three different Commission districts where Highland Communications has had their engineers out, um, looking at where they can, um, meet the guidelines for that application. Under this program, this is, um, Tennessee has allocated some of their American Rescue Plan funding towards this broadband work. Uh, it would be 70% State of Tennessee and 30% match from the applicant. The applicant is Highland Communication. I am going to separate my next ask, because the first one is specifically for Highland Communication. And this requires, we can go just as it is with not putting any money of our own in. They would be responsible for the full 30%. The State of Tennessee, if we win, would provide the 70%.
Commissioner, Commissioner Maiden.
I just want to point out that there's legislation, uh, in the state legislature right now that will substantially improve the flexibility for moving to unserved areas with the internet service. And so I think there's a couple of those that are going to make this process even easier than it was.
Yep.
It really breaks down some of the artificial barriers where companies have, you know, that's like their area, but they don't want to put the service out there because there's not enough business. And, uh, so now, literally almost anybody that wants to do, you know, a proper expansion of internet, uh, the, the counties and the municipalities have a lot more control over that now than there was in the past. And I'm sure the, these bills, I'm sure are going to, all of these are going to pass. Uh, the county, the Tennessee County Commission Association, we had a big meeting where we looked at all these bills, and those bills all received strong support, uh, from the Tennessee County Commission Association, and that's, that's a pretty big draw. I also looked at who was sponsoring the bills, it was people like Yeager and stuff like that, that their bills generally pass. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, let's go to the Board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Then, um, kind of another, this is just a possibility, and, um, for this grant application, or if any other grant, um, applicant, such as a Comcast or an AT&amp;T, if anyone else applies, there are additional points if Anderson County puts some money in. And, for instance, with Highland, I said, you know, what would you, what would you recommend as a contribution? The discussion was, well, you know, 100,000, 250,000. Anderson County could choose that. And looking at the grant application from the State of Tennessee, one of the things that we're required to do if we use, for instance, um, our American Rescue Plan funding, we have procurement requirements, and with that, we can't limit to one provider. But we could get additional points. For instance, I know Commissioner Wondell, you're working on a Comcast, um, possible grant application. Uh, I think Jay has, has been working with you on that. If we did do some contribution language and make it applicable to anyone who is applying, and, um, just make that commitment to the match, that would address the procurement issues. So it's any provider that wanted to apply. And I just jotted down, um, some suggested motion. So, motion to authorize a blank dollar match to any provider awarded a grant in Anderson County from the Tennessee Emergency Broadband Fund, American Rescue Plan Program, contingent upon Law Director and Finance Department approval for compliance. And I did run this by Jay. Um, of course, he'd need to look at this further, and I did talk to Robbie and, um, Randy about this as well. This would cover any, the Tennessee broadband deadline is March 15th. So, that's the reason I'm thinking if we did language, if another provider comes for another part of the county, it would only apply if we win, you know, if, if they win their application. But just for, just to kind of give you an idea of the numbers we're talking about, for Anderson County, so far, Highland hasn't completely finished their analysis. They're looking at the Anderson County portion of 38.24 miles, their investment would be 3,282,000. Their 30% match, 984,000. I don't know that this is final, so this is area where they know they can cover right now that meets the guidelines to the best of their knowledge. Um, it's Graves Gap, which is Brown Flats Lane, Braden Flats Lane, Duncan Flats, um, a small section on 116, Seber Mountain, Thistle Hollow, Vowell Mountain Lane, Beech Grove. They don't have, they're still working on everything. So, once they have a map, they said they are happy to come back to this body and put maps, maps up on the screen for you all. But that's just one. I know there's something still happening with Comcast, but this is just a suggestion, suggestion only. It, it doesn't make or break the deal. But if you do put in something from a local standpoint, you're going to get additional points from the State of Tennessee's perspective. It shows Anderson County really wants this, and they're willing to commit some of their own funds, so.
Commissioner McCamey?
Okay, so the deadline is March 15th?
Yes.
We will not have another meeting prior to that?
No.
So, if we're going to do it, we need to do it tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I hope that's the motion that's on the floor.
Is that your motion, Commissioner Isbell? Seconded by Commissioner Val, and you had a comment also?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just wanted to say that, uh, I know I have, Tim probably has as well, gotten several phone calls from residents in that area. Um, and it's, it's the same request that we've probably all heard at one point or another out in the rural areas of the county. Their children come home, they're trying to do their homework. A lot of homework nowadays requires the phone book, which we also help the school department purchase, and do their homework with internet access. And some of those rural areas, uh, just don't have it. So, anything that, that we can do that's going to assist with that, uh, and I'm, I'm proud that we've reached this point, and that we can tell our constituents up there that, good Lord willing, the creek don't rise, it, it is coming. So, I'd ask that we all support that.
Do you all have a suggested number? I mean, do you want to say 100,000? Uh, one of the things I talked to Robbie and Randy about is we do have that new infrastructure legislation as well, that we don't have the final numbers on. I don't think it has to be, um, American Rescue Plan money. It doesn't have to be general fund. It's just a commitment, and if there is no award, then we don't appropriate anything. But, um, Randy is going to look into the infrastructure bill as well to see if those funds, because, uh, it's supposed to cover broadband as well.
Commissioner Isbell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since 2010, we've done at least two resolutions that was voted on unanimous from this committee to, uh, in support of broadband for these areas. Commissioner Creasy was one of the leaders in helping put that together. And, uh, actually, coming up the idea about doing resolutions, going back to what Commissioner Scott said, he helped Commissioner, well, Zach Bates and myself at the time, inform this resolution. It's very important to these people that's in these rural areas, because, uh, we've dealt with something for probably a couple of years with them still on the phone lines. And then there's no communication whatsoever in that area. But we sure appreciate anything that you can do to help, and it, you always have, and I really appreciate that.
Was there a, a dollar amount in your motion you wanted to?
I was going to wait on Commissioner Wondell. He may have a suggestion.
You're not putting a number on me? Election's coming up pretty soon. No, I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman and Mayor. Um, I, I, I would like to kind of think about the idea you said, Mayor, of the infrastructure plan. What I've learned about a little bit today is going to cover the cable side of the house, I think. And, and, uh, I don't see why we couldn't kind of make a commitment to use those funds, uh, when they come in. That would keep our current ARP money kind of in place to take care of the things that have been discussed already, whether it's roads, buildings, what have you. So I, I would support that for sure. I know, uh, Commissioner Fritz and myself, uh, I get emails quite a bit, very frustrating for people that can't get connected. And, you know, for me, it was frustrating to understand how any cable provider, in this case, it happened to be Comcast, could go back to our people and say, you know, it's $6,000, Moody Hall Road over there, you know? There's just a lot of different things going on, and I, I, it seemed to me that the cable companies are going to be getting, uh, some, some grants, I'll call it, as well. So I know they need some proceeds from us to kind of match some things, but I, I just want to be able to, I don't know how we go about it, but we need to, for our district for sure, and I know many other districts, we need to, um, understand what areas we're going to try to approach and fix. So, I would support it. You know, I, I wouldn't, I mean, it's money we're going to be getting in, it's not the taxpayers' dollars, per se, of local tax dollars. Uh, I would support going to 250, 250,000 to set aside. Doesn't mean we have to spend it, right, Mayor? I mean, we could just...
Correct. Um, but I think just for procurement sta, for, make sure we're in compliance with the law, whatever provider applies, so whether it's, I mean, I don't think we have in Anderson County, I think we just have Highland, Comcast, and AT&amp;T, but if there's another one that I'm not familiar with, we would need to offer the same thing to each one of them if they're applying.
Okay.
So right now, I'm only aware of AT, I mean, of Comcast and Highland that are working on something. But, so it just needs to be for, the same amount for whatever provider.
Gotcha.
What is the amount that you want to provide to each applicant?
Um, I, I think that's the number we're talking about right now, so, um...
In other words, we have more than one provider to apply. We would only be given money to the ones that...
That win. Yes, sir.
Grant. So, is there a possibility of more than one winning? Uh, in other words, what I'm trying to get at, is there a possibility of being two or three providers coming to us, uh, requesting?
I've, I feel like there are two, and two that have their act together and know what they're doing when they apply for grants. So, I can't predict the future, I can't predict, you know, if, and I know Highland is definitely working March, I, I know they've even, everyone's seeing their trucks. I think Chairman Anderson posted some pictures of them doing their engineering work. So I know they're rushing to meet the deadline. Uh, Comcast, I'm not certain about.
And if I want to comment on Mr., Commissioner Isbell's applauding me there, I appreciate that very much. But, the mayor is a hardworking mayor, and she certainly led the way back a couple of years ago in this broadband. I, she, she deserves the credit more than anyone else here, so. And I applaud her for the effort she's put in this.
Well, I appreciate that, Commissioner Creasy, but I haven't delivered anything. We, 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 uh, we've had some great efforts and some great partnerships and teamwork, but we have not won. But sometimes it takes multiple attempts, like the Norwood, Norwood sidewalks, it took three attempts. So, hopefully, we're going to get one of these. There's a lot more money. When there's a lot more money, there are more awards to hand out, so.
Yeah. Thank you very much for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Isbell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm in agreement with Commissioner Wondell on the 250,000 as part of the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner, and Commissioner Mead?
And I, the, the key thing about this county contribution is that it makes the procurement process a little smoother, right? Is the key thing.
Yes, sir.
And by it being the same regardless of who wins. Uh, the only question I have is, is, uh, their bid is going to say what areas they're willing to cover. And one company might have a very different area than another. Uh, and if it means leaving some area uncovered, do we have a, do we have a backup plan? For instance, and I don't have any stock nor ever invested in any satellite internet company, but I was having some problem with my personal service, and, right in Oak Ridge. And so I checked into it. It's, it's, it's not too bad. It's like 25 megabyte service, and it's, it's only from 100-mile-high satellites that there's no lag. And I'm not trying to make an ad, I'm saying it's something that, that could be usable. But I understand... I understand the initial setup is expensive, because it takes a little, little teeny antenna up on your roof someplace. It, it doesn't take a dish or anything, but it takes a little antenna, and the initial equipment is six, $700, you know, to set it up. But, but it's like, there isn't, there's no choice. There is now a choice with this, with this new, I don't know, they got, I don't know, they get 1,500 or 2,000 satellites or something zoomed around. And so instead of having a dish to point at some satellite that's 25,000 miles away, it just automatically shifts as the satellites come over, it just locks onto whatever the strongest signal is. And it, and that technology, and that, that service is gonna get better and better, but all of Anderson County is in their reception area now. And so unless you're really living right next to a really high cliff, you should be able to get service with this new kinda, with this new, new thing. And, you know, that's just something I discovered, thought you might wanna know about that, that we don't have to leave people with no choice.
Right.
I like my internet faster than that personally, but, but it's still a lot better. It's 25 megabyte, used to be really premium service, and now it's considered mediocre. Thanks.
Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. Mayor, is 250,000 enough? And I'm asking that because it wasn't that long ago that Comcast was saying it was gonna cost about $45,000 for like a phone pole out in the middle of nowhere. And after going on enough ride-alongs with the sheriff's department and seeing kids in the middle of the road with their phones, because that's where they get their signal, is that gonna be enough money?
Well, they're eligible for, this is a very generous grant match from the state of Tennessee, so it is, they're matching 70% of the company's investment. So that's a, I think that's why they're approaching it, at least Highland is, you know, if you will help, that shows commitment, but they're willing to match that 30% in order to receive 70% to, to serve people in the county, so. I think it's, I think it's a good amount. I think it's a very good amount.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. 14 yes, 1 no, motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners, for that. You all have worked very hard on this. We're gonna keep working. I know there's a lot of people out there, even in highly-served areas, and there are pockets where I just can't believe we don't have service, but we'll keep working out on it. Last item is the Sea Cadets. I wanted to give you a little update. You had done a motion for them to stop using the senior center and that they be relocated to DARC. So, the latest, with moving them to DARC, this puts us back into the same scenario where we had the daycare operation in there. If we have the youth in there, then we would be required to do sprinklers or go back to the fire watch scenario. So I don't think we really wanna go down that path, unless you want to go down that path. Now, I can ask them to get their materials, they could use all their materials and store them. We could let them go one more time in the senior center and try to find them another location, and if you all would help, you know, pitch in and help me find another location. They drill about once a month, and it's usually Friday evening to Sunday evening, and they just need a space where they can divide the boys and girls into classrooms, but then have one large area in order to do some of the drills. And I just wanted to kinda let you know what was going on there.
Commissioner Danbury?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, you answered part of what I was going to ask, what kind of facility did they actually For one, I really do wanna go back to, you know, the fire walkers and all that other sort of thing that we had to do at DRC. But is there an issue with them using the senior center?
I, I, I don't think it's been the fit that we thought it was, and I know some of the Commissioners have also, just it being in Mariners Point and the community and them doing some of the drills, I think there have been some issues there from a community standpoint. You know, they're up early, they're running around the neighborhood doing their drills, which is a wonderful thing. I just don't think it's been the fit everyone thought it would be at the senior center. So, they're a great organization.
How many, how many students are there in total?
Ooh.
Guesstimation's good.
50?
That's a good number.
I mean, I think sometimes, I've gone to some of their banquets, there have been more than that. There's all different age groups, so I may be seriously underestimating the number there, so.
And how often do they meet?
Once a month, although sometimes they've gone several months without drilling, and then they may have an active period and they drill regularly, so.
And is it once a month?
Yes, yes. And they don't, I mean, they're not, there's, they don't need something, they're very humble in terms of they don't need fancy, in a fancy environment, they just need space and, you know, four walls and some heat and some air. So.
Well, the one thing about the DRC building is the gymnasium.
That's why we thought it was gonna be perfect.
Yeah. Well, we'll see what else we can come up with. Thank you, ma'am.
Absolutely.
Commissioner McCamey?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to ask the mayor to work with the school superintendent and see if they couldn't use one of our schools.
Okay.
If it's good enough for our youth to go to school, it should be good enough for the youth to go, you know, and it's, weekends are very seldom anything going on in the weekend, but if you could work with the school superintendent?
Sure, sure.
And the board, I'd make that in the form of a motion.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey. We have a second. Second by Commissioner Isabel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes. Commissioner Scott?
I was gonna ask about the armory.
The arm, oh, suggesting the armory? Oh, we can still?
Yeah, I don't know why they've never done that. I need to follow up on that.
Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to thank the mayor. She sent an email today, and during our last operations committee, I asked about the motion we had asked for her to write a letter to the state representative and state lieutenant governor, rather, McNally, about the private act 21-10-898. Again, that, that private act was requesting the state to kinda keep the county commission nonpartisan and the constables nonpartisan, and she was kind enough to send a letter today and let me know that she sent that letter on, and she's waiting for the information to come back, and she'll report back to us. I just wanna say thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we've got the law director report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be with you. I can deny it, I'm trying to be fast here. Does anybody have any questions on Section A, the contract approvals? I got one late addition, and that's came in after the agenda deadline. This is safe baby grant, has been renewed for another year, $115,000, and applicants were, their circuit court clerk, Rex Lynch, Judge Hunt, and Tracy Spitzer, our director of youth probation over there, so we're glad to accept that $115,000 for the safe baby grant. This, I think, is the second or third year. You got any questions on the zoning violations, tax assessment change orders, and lawsuit updates? I've got some good news, I'm gonna have to temper it slightly. For the first time in 12 years, we have no ongoing lawsuits at our jail. Let me temper that. We had a lady file an appeal, it's frivolous, Friday afternoon, Captain Vow's laughing, but I am too. But anyway, that's going nowhere, it's pro se appeal, and, but anyway, it's been a long, hard road for the members of this body that's been up here for many, many years. It's been a long time since we can say that we have no active litigation in our jail. The many years of overcrowding, and we dealt with each one of them, and I don't believe we lost a single case over that time. So we're close, but I wanna thank the sheriff, has done amazing job out there, and Chief Galloway. But I do wanna say thanks to Captain Vow, Commissioner Vow, he does a fantastic job, and especially Chief Parker. The guy should've been a lawyer. He, you know Chief Parker, he's so meticulous. He was a Marine Corps officer and retired and came to work with us, gee, over 15 years ago, I think. But when we get a lawsuit out there, I let Chief Parker know, and he gets it all together, every document, intake, medical, whatever, and he gets it over to me with a day. He's an amazing person, but thanks, Chief Parker. He's not here tonight, but amazing job, and he had a lot to do with these cases. You've handled the road dedication, the American nuclear letters, you've got those, the Turkey Hunt Resolution, the mayor handled that. I've got the letter in support of legislation allowing off-road vehicles, that's under the operations committee report. If you see any changes there, I've got a draft sent to you today. Let me know, I wanna get that out tonight. Tomorrow is the safety committee meeting where this issue will come up, so I need to get that down there tonight after the meeting. And the honorary resolution for John Rice Irwin. Any other questions?
Commissioner Vow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Jay, for the, for the kind words, and I'll even go out on a limb past what Jay said, Chief Parker, brilliant legal mind, I learn a lot from him each and every day. But I also want to give some credit to the men and women that work in our facility. We hire folks that work in an environment every day that I would dare say is unlike any other environment that any of us work in. We send one man into a housing unit with over 60 inmates, charged with everything, from being ugly in public to first degree murder. The only thing separating them from the inmates is a red line painted on the floor, and our officers training them fortitude. And we have dedicated men and women that come in and they do that job, thankless job at times every day, for the minimum pay that, that we can get by with paying them. And we are blessed in this county to have those dedicated men and women. We get to go to other facilities from time to time and work in their facilities and help them, and we are blessed at Anderson County to have the men and women that work in our facility, and out on the road as well, but I know more about the inside, but just wanna take a minute, too, they help us a lot by doing their jobs correctly every day to mitigate any damages that we may ever have to pay out in a lawsuit.
Well said.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well deserved. That's all I have, and Commissioner Mead, are you talking about Starlink on the internet service?
Yeah.
That came up last June, and a couple of us, that's Mr. Musk's endeavor, a couple of us went out immediately that night and put down our deposit. Guess what? There's still no service. So I've got two emails from them since last June, and it's basically hurry up and wait. Commissioner Jameson?
One of my constituents called me and asked me about renting a facility that's owned by the county, and they wanted to know about the liability, if something happened at that facility, who, would the county be liable, or would the people who rented it be liable, or what?
What kind of facility is it? Depends on the issue?
Okay, it's, I'll, I'll be specific. The senior citizens, some people during the holidays rented that building. And this person wanted to know if something happened, nothing happened naturally, but what if something had happened, what, who would be liable?
It's a, if it's a property defect, it's on us. Under Tennessee law, business invitees or guests on your premises is a higher level standard of care, so it would be on the county if somebody's hurt now. There is cases where the guest could be negligent, and we might not cover that. But if it's a deficiency in the building itself, something that happens there, more than likely, it's gonna fall on the county to handle that, and due to the standard of care in Tennessee.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. If you have a specific question, have them call me, and I'll be glad to help them. Any other questions that I can help this body with, pending legal matters or anything?
Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay, maybe you and the mayor, you know, we had the park in Claxton kinda shut down over the weekend, and I'm just curious, what, what's the next step? The sign says, says it's closed for maintenance. I know when I was on the conservation board, we put new ADA mulch in there every two years, and I don't know when the last time mulch was put in there, but I'm getting a lot of questions on why the, the citizens can't use the park, so I'd like some direction on what's the corrective action plan and when we're gonna fix the issue so the park can be reopened for the community.
We're glad to help you. I just talked to Ben out there, and I've been in contact with Josh, he's, Josh Anderson is the chairman of the conservation board as well as the county commission, and it looks like we need some geotextile fiber in a couple of locations. Ben spoke about another spot that he wants to repair. He told me tonight that he actually does have the geotextile, they couldn't get there, down there today because of the weather, but we'll get down there and get those places patched, get that ground covered up, and if we have to, we'll replace the mulch. It sounds like we need a couple loads of mulch down there, type specific, but we're working on it right now. We'll check with TDEC and see if that's adequate for their correction, corrective action measures, and hopefully it is for the time being, and Ben will get busy on it as soon as he gets good weather. But if you have additional questions, if I get an update, I'll let you know, sir.
It used to be Kellum's Recycling when you get that mulch, ADA mulch, they bring it out in truckloads. Yeah, if you could keep me updated, I'd like to sit bark open.
I'll, I'll keep everybody updated on this issue. Don't worry about it. Anything else I can help you with? All right, thank you for your time tonight. Call me if there's a issue, email, whatever.
Thank you. So we've got the committee reports, operations committee, Chairman Isabel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, Commissioner Wondell made a motion to allow our tourism director, Stephanie Wells, to move forward with appraisal on the visitor-centered facility. Commissioner McCamey seconded the motion. Motion passed forward, full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Wondell?
Yeah, this motion in operations, and he's, Commissioner Isabel said it, Chairman Isabel, this is just to allow her to go out and explore what, what the appraisal would be, and then report back. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner McCamey made a motion, had the law director draft a letter to the safety committee and legislators in support of the ROHVA House Bill 2041, Senate Bill 2083, and bringing the full commission meeting for approval, which he did. Seconded by Commissioner Mead, motion passed.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Isabel. Any discussion? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner McCamey made a motion to prove to extend emergency sick leave ESL with the updated document, which is Exhibit 1, March 1 through June 30th, for full and regular part-time employees receiving a positive COVID-19 test, and to update the required documentation forms, seconded by Commissioner Mead, motion passed forward, full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner Wondell made a motion to authorize installation- Commissioner Wondell made a motion to authorize installation of his store at courthouse signs contingent upon finalization of the wording on the signs, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Motion passed forward, full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner McCamey made a motion to accept a CDA Clinton's offer to require property from Anderson County and authorized the matter to execute associated paperwork, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Motion passed forward, full commission for approval.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Wondell. Any discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes the operations committee report.
Thank you, Chairman Isbell.
Thank you.
Next we have the ADA committee report by Chairman Creasy.
Yes, uh, thank you. What I wanted to, to mention to you is I'd like to applaud our committee, ADA committee. We've got, uh, assisted listening devices now available in all of our courtrooms and the county commission room. And we're getting ready to put the same listening devices in the 118A, uh, meeting room. For those who have hearing issues, they can now listen and hear everything that's being said through the microphones here at the, and I'm having a wonderful time listening and hearing everything it's said tonight. And I can even hear some of you whispering over.
I thought you said it was over there.
But I want to thank the mayor. She's been helping the ADA committee and, uh, Leanne and, uh, Brian, our IT man. He's worked real hard with us and, uh, and of course, thank Louise McCown. She has worked hard with us for over 25 years now. And, uh, I think she came on about 1994, 1995. So she's been with us over 25 and she's working real hard. And we've made a lot of accomplishments over the years, but our committee has kind of dwindled. When we first started that committee, we had a large number of members and I'm sure Robert remembers that. We, we had, uh, people with disabilities. We had citizens. We had, uh, attorneys occasionally would check with us. And, uh, Ann McRae helped us get that started when she, she was, uh, special education with the school department back in 1990. So we've accomplished a lot, very slowly, not spending a tremendous amount of money from the county taxpayers, but just a little bit along the line, a little bit every year. And we've got quite a bit done and, but we need some help. We're, I'm getting older and, uh, Louise is too. So we need new help and new members and, and to keep, keep it going. And you can see what a great front we got out there and the accessible parking and the city of Clinton has worked with us all these years, making it very possible where a person with a disability has no trouble getting in this courthouse and getting into these rooms. And now they can hear what's going on, so. And I want to thank everybody here for all of that. It's very deserving for those that, with issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any business, any new business?
I'm not sure if this is new or old.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Mead.
Okay, yeah, in, in regard to this thing of the, of the, um, the four-wheelers and stuff on the state roads that, that John Reagan has a bill right now. If you just read that bill, it looks like, you know, it looks like that, uh, this kind of use of, of off-road vehicles in Tennessee is fairly unusual. And I went back to the actual statute that Tennessee code annotated. Just to give you a hint, this is broad. This is, this is scattered all over the mountain, particularly the mountainous portions of Tennessee. The, currently the use of off-road motor vehicles on highways has about 40 different locations across Tennessee. And the first thing you notice that is first, it talks about the general safety requirements. They have to be licensed drivers and they have to have helmets and they have to have lights and stoplights and all this kind of stuff. There's a lot of those regulations, which the county, on all county roads already has under this law, the authority to, to regulate the use of off-road vehicles on county roads. But for state roads, it has to be added to this act. Well, it starts with Area A, then it goes through Area Z, then it goes to Area A, A, B, B, C, C, D, D. Okay? And I'm, and just, and just that last one, it lists about 14 areas in different lengths of road across different counties across Tennessee. This is my concern. If this company that sent this ugly letter, it just says, this is perfectly legal, but we don't like it. If, if the legislature doesn't pass this bill, all 60 of these sections of roads across Tennessee, which have been just revitalizing the economies of the areas that have done this, could, would, would be at risk. This is not just this one little section of road. This bill that Reagan has out now basically starts the, in the old section of Oliver Springs, then goes out to 330, then goes up toward Bryceville up that way. But there's the 60 other sections of road across, across the state of Tennessee. And those would potentially be at risk. If you know people who live up around the, where all this mo, this four-wheeling is happening, ask them if it's had an effect on their lives and the, and the, and the people who live up there. In fact, just driving through Oak Ridge, which doesn't have any trailheads real close. Man, you wouldn't believe how many RVs or odd trailers in the parking lots of the hotels and parked in front of Walmart and Kroger. I mean, this is a big, big deal, particularly to east Tennessee. And this area right north of us is one of the biggest four-wheeling areas, recreational areas in the country. And we, I don't think we want to put that at risk. So we really need to make sure that this goes across well. And, uh, I'm going to just let you know, I'm going to talk with Charlie Curtis, the executive director of the Tennessee County Commission Organization, about whether, that he will add this to the list of bills that he is supporting for TCCA. I know he can do a vote online with the members of that committee. And, uh, I think it's pretty, I think this is much more important than what, if you just read the bill, the one paragraph bill, it sounds like a pretty small deal, but it puts all this other stuff at risk, which is a big deal to the economy of the state. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Isbell.
I just want to expound, expound on that right there. Thank you, Commissioner Mead. But a lot of this goes, credit should go to our tourism director, Stephanie Wells. She came to our county commissioners, that district and the city council and the mayor and said, you know, this is, this has worked with the Hatfield and McCoy, like in West Virginia. And it has been a great boom. And you see that we started out in the city of Rocky Top and now it's spreading all over the state. I think Campbell County wants every road that they've got to be able to ride because they see the financial gain in the tourism. And the mayor supported this 100%. I think this committee has worked well together, along with our tourism director and our mayor. And we've got some things accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you. Any old business? Want to do a moment of silence for Mr. Holbrook? Is that all right with everyone? Okay. No other, no other business?
My pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
Stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.